We're gonna, we need clarification. We need help. Help me, help me.
I don't think you can relate to the situation. I just want to talk about it. If you do have a question, please ask. I believe that they can tell me, uh, my opinion on the issue. It's kind of a little hard to say in a small city. And then if you are a small city, then the 500 foot doesn't apply. More so in the 300 foot district. So that's that is my opinion. That's what I'm trying to say. So that's my opinion. So like, yeah.
Um, I don't remember what this one is. It's about four years ago. I, it's not an air. Yes. Uh, yes. I don't, I, I am rare on these. I thought I would find one. Don't be talking about that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm really not sure. I love, I'm a couple here. And I'm not too, um, and I love it, but I still like that. It's not like they're. I do. It's depending on who's here. Yeah, I mean, I think you, I, you know, I, I should, I should get one out there. But I don't know, just never, or, you know, people, oh, I, I love trying to help here. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I got one. Is, is roll call any of those? Yep, right wing. Vanessa, uh, this one is a spirit moving chair. She's.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Westman.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Chairperson Smith.
Here. If you'd both please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are some handouts that we distributed and have in the back room, including an errata sheet for item 5C, the Nob Hill Project at 809 Bay Avenue.
Thank you. This is the time for public comments. These are for communications from the public that are not included on our agenda this evening. All speakers are requested to print your name when you approach the podium, and please do speak into the microphone so that folks can hear you at home. And the amount of time allowed for each comment is three minutes. So if there's anyone here who'd like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please come forward.
Hello, members of the commission. My name is Doug Bowman. I live on Orchid Avenue. And eventually, you're going to be looking into the proposed skate park at Monterey Avenue. And I just would like to urge you to consider the neighborhood, the fact that 95% of the neighbors adjacent to that park do not want it there, and consider scaling it back to the original thing we were talking about, like a 2,000-foot skate park for the little kids and families and stuff, and leave the, the bigger kids can go to the McGregor Skate Par- I'm, the McGregor Skate Park that's already in progress. And you, I don't see the need for two big skate parks 1,000 yards apart. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, commission members. My name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue, and I have the distinction, dubious distinction of being the closest neighbor to the proposed skate park, proposed 6,000-foot skate park at Monterey Park. And, and I'll be brief tonight. I, I just wanted to say that I, along with many others in the neighborhood, are trying to really understand this proposed skate park. We're looking for comparables to figure out what will be the natural effects and maybe the unintended consequences of the skate park. And fortunately, we were given by the promoters of the proposed skate park, an example of the Ojai Skate Park in Ojai, California, Ventura County, where they say that a letter from Ojai Superintendent has a skate park right next to their district office and school. And that sounds very encouraging for a comparable. The superintendent writes that the new skate park is now more than three years old and rests at the far east end of the district office property. So that prompted me to do a little investigation, and I find that the Ojai Skate Park is actually widely separated from the district office by a two-story gymnasium. The school that's next door, next door to the skate park is Chaparral High School. It's a continuation high school of 60 students. On the left of the skate park is Valero Gas Station. On the right is the Chevron Gas Station. And the parking, the shopping center is further on down. And across the street of the business district are commercial enterprises, restaurants, baking companies, and that sort of thing. So it's actually in a commercial area, which I think, if it is successful, helps it to be successful. We are in a heavily neighborhood area of residences, and we don't think that this sort of a plan will work, but it does point out that it can work in a commercial area. And the last thing I want to say is that noise is going to be a big concern in this project. And Ojai, California, has a really nice noise standard and regulations that help protect residents from unhealthy levels of noise. And I think it's interesting that they have here in the noise ordinance, they have nine factors that they weigh as to whether the noise is a nuisance or not. And the sound level of the objectional noise, which is the decibel level, is just the first one, and there's eight more. So the project is going to be very involved. It's going to be very contentious, and we hope to have enough information that we can avoid a long conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Lippi, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is the decibel level in Ojai? What is the decibel? What do they list in their ordinances as the decibel?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's good, because they're very specific about that. In the residential zone, the maximum is 55 decibels from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then in commercial areas, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, it's 65 decibels.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Helen Bryce. I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to the proposed skate park proposal in Monterey Park for reasons of noise that Rich Lippi just brought up, but for many, many other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to commission comments.
No.
None.
Staff comments? Approval of the minutes?
I move approval. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passed. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without further discussion unless someone from the public or someone from the commission would like to pull one of those items. Tonight, we have two items on the consent calendar. The first is 2185 41st Avenue, which is a sign permit for a new awning with sign for a dentist's office in the community commercial zoning district. And 3555 Claire Street, Suite TT, a conditional use permit for sale of beer and wine at an existing restaurant, Rue Dot, in the community commercial zoning district. Is there anyone from the public who would like to pull either of these items and have further discussion? Seeing none, are there any?
I'd like to make one comment on item 4B. Condition number two is related to the hours of the operation and days of week, and staff would recommend removing condition number two before adopting the consent agenda, so they're not tied to specific hours of operation. Thank you.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the exclusion of condition number two in item 4B.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, unanimous. Moving on now to public hearings. Each of the public hearings are designed to give the public an opportunity to speak and be heard. The process that we'll use in reviewing each of these items will be a staff presentation. Once the presentation is over, we'll give the public an opportunity to speak, starting with the applicant themselves, if they, if they would like to do a presentation. After that, we'll bring it back to the commission and have our comments. The public speaks before the, the commission takes it on, and then we will reach a decision. So 429 Riverview Avenue, staff report, please.
Before we start, can I ask a question about conflict of interest?
Sure.
Thank you so much for giving me my little map, which showed the circles 300 feet and 500 feet. The way this works, the way I understand it, the FPPC says that if a project is within 300 feet of your, one of the commissioner's residences, then we need to recuse ourselves because it is presumed that we have a conflict with a project that's so close to us. There's also a 500-foot rule, which I believe applies if a commissioner has a financial conflict, which means that they own a business, or they own a property that's actually a rental that's rented out within that area. So having watched the council recently, they seem to have adopted the 300-foot rule, and I understand they're doing that because the FPPC has now said there's some sort of exclusion for small cities like Capitola, where really the 300-foot applies, not the 500-foot, unless you have an actual financial conflict. So am I correct? Is that what our city attorney is now telling us, or?
I can comment on that. The 300-foot setback distance is set based on the fact that we are a smaller city and under 20,000 in population. So that, that's why we can go to the 300-foot. I can look further into the 500-foot regarding whether or not you're a business owner. I'd like to bring more clarity to that, to the second half of your question. But the 300 is the limit that we utilize based on the size of our city.
Because I believe Commissioner Ortiz and I both live within 500 feet of the property, but not 300 feet of the property.
Well, that's probably the reason I didn't get a green card on it, so I'm assuming that's probably the reason.
Okay, so we can participate?
You can.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one second. Before we go to the presentation, I neglected to announce that this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8, and is being recorded to be replayed on Monday and Friday next week on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. You can also view the meeting live on the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Tonight, our technician is Renee Sheets. And please, if you haven't already turned off your cellphone, please turn off your cellphone during the meeting. Thank you. Staff report, please. Since I caught it, it doesn't count.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and commissioners. Before you tonight, there's a conditional use permit, design permit, and variance for an addition to a historic single-family home at 429 Riverview Avenue, located in the R1 Single Family Zoning District. It's highlighted in blue in the aerial. On the screen is a photo of the existing home. The structure at 429 Riverview is located within the old Riverview Historic District. The home was built during the settlement period of the district. The character-defining features of the historic home at 429 Riverview Avenue include the one-and-a-half story main wing with a distinctive bellcast roofline, simple barge boards with tapered ends, turned finials at the apex and the ends of the gables, board and baton siding, wood siding, two original wood casement windows and French doors. As you see in this image, the home is located along the entrance of the Riverview Walkway. On the cover of your application, there is an image, as seen on the screen, that includes an archway sign to identify the entrance into the walkway. I'd like to clarify that this is an offer on the half of the applicant that will go to city council for review for donating an archway, but it is not part of the review this evening, and because it's on city property, I'd like to keep that separate from the review tonight. Thank you. The image on the slide is a survey of the lot. Here is the footprint of the building shown in blue. The historic structure does not comply with side yard setback regulations of the zoning code, and therefore is a non-conforming structure. To bring the historic home into compliance with setbacks would require removing a portion of the historic home, and is contrary to historic preservation. The applicant within this approval is going beyond the 80% allotment for a non-conforming structure with the improvements proposed, and is requesting a variance for the non-conforming structure requirements within our code. This image shows the addition onto the front of the home towards Riverview Avenue. The new addition is located within 6.5 feet of the front property line and three feet of the side property line on the second story. Also, the parking dimensions required by code are 10 feet by 18 feet for sidewalk exempt areas. The applicant is requesting a variance for substandard parking lot, parking sizes at eight and a half feet wide, rather than the required nine-foot-wide spots. They do have two spots on site. They're just substandard. So the applicant is requesting a variance for the front and side yard setbacks, parking dimensions, and the non-conforming structure at the 80% threshold. This is an aerial image of the property relative to surrounding properties. As seen in this slide, many of the existing structures do not comply, do not comply with the front yard setbacks and likely the onsite parking requirements. The planning commission may grant a variance permit when it finds that because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of this title is found to deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under the identical zoning classification. And also, when they find that the grant of a variance permit would not constitute the grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone. As indicated in the staff report, staff supports a variance request as a method of preserving the historic home while allowing the homeowner to have additional space, although utilizing area within the setbacks. By allowing the addition into the setbacks, the historic structure is not overwhelmed by the new addition. Now to take a look at the proposed design. This, this slide includes the south elevation that will face the Riverview pathway. As you can see, the historic portion of the home is maintained with the new addition off of the front of the home. This is the home as viewed from the SoCal Creek. The new addition looks as if it is looming in this 2D image, when in fact, it is set 40 feet back from the primary facade. As viewed from the river, the historic home will maintain the current one-and-a-half story This is the home as viewed from Riverview Avenue. You can see the open-covered parking under the new addition. The floor of the second story is eight and a half feet above grade. This will keep the new living space out of the flood plain while maintaining the scale of the streetscape. This slide includes the north elevation as viewed from the neighboring residence. In this slide, you can see how the introduction of the new exterior materials differentiates the historic from the new. Oh, I'm sorry, that was the slide. This is the first-story floor plan of the home. The owner will enter through the gate that leads to the central courtyard depicted in tan on the screen. The homeowner can enter the home off the courtyard through three different entrances as shown on the slide. One entrance leads to the second story through a set of stairs. The second entrance leads into the master bedroom on the main floor, and the third into the common area near the kitchen. This is the second story. The internal staircases lead to the bunk room. The exterior staircase provides an alternative to walking through the bunk room to access the other two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The applicant submitted a historic background and description and an assessment of compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards by historian Kent L. Seavey. At the time of submittal, staff sent the plans and Mr. Seavey's report out for third-party technical review by architectural historian Leslie Dill. Ms. Dill did not agree with Mr. Seavey's findings for the original review and identified standards that were not in compliance under the original design. Home designer Derek Van Alstine worked with Ms. Dill, Ms. Dill, to address her design concerns. On March 26, 2015, Ms. Dill made findings of compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards as conditioned. Also, staff would like to request an additional condition be added to the permit if granted. During the ark and site review, the Public Works Department requested that Sheet E1 be updated to reflect stormwater permit project applications. Due to the designer being out of town, this change was unable to be made in, before the packet went out, so we're requesting to add a condition of approval that this be done prior to building permit. Staff recommends approval of the application, 13179, with the additional condition of approval for stormwater. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
I have one question. Can you go back to the elevation which shows the, the proposed from Riverview Avenue? Okay. Thank you. Okay, if there are no questions of staff, this is the time for public comment. The applicant is here.
My name is Derek Van Alstine. I am the applicant, and I represent the residents who would have loved to have been here. They had a family emergency and were unable to be here. I know they wanted to very much. This, this project goes back quite a ways for us. We spent a good portion of a year on it before we applied in 2013. It's now been another year and a half to deal with all of the issues. It's a very difficult project, being it's not just in the flood plain, it's in the floodway. So the, the restrictions that are put on it are fairly severe. And then having it being, it is, for the most part, a single-wall structure that's there now. Part of it's been rebuilt after the earthquake. The chimney came down, and the interior of the living space was rebuilt, and it was studded at that point. So it has stud walls in, in a portion of it. I think we can stud wall the rest of it, and then be able to lift it in order to fix the foundation. It's a difficult task for a lot of different reasons. So a very challenging project. There was disagreement amongst the historians as to what worked and what didn't work. And there was also my disagreement with what they thought originally. So what we've come up with is something that I think that we could all agree on. It's, there, with any of these projects, there are compromises. There are some compromises that we made that had to be made in order to get it out of the floodway, and to relieve the old structure from the presence of the new structure. And what was finally decided was that the best way to facilitate that was to build a new portion of the structure towards the street so that the remaining portion of it wasn't impacted from the river and from the, and from the river walk, which we, which everyone felt was actually more important than the street. It's somewhat blocked, as you can see from the street here, and that the little projection that you can see on the second floor actually was a, is a contemporary addition. It was done in the 60s. The, the window that you see upstairs, just to the left of that small portion of the second floor, is one of the few windows left from the original house. That's getting moved down to the kitchen. Wherever we can save pieces of it, we are saving pieces of it. A majority of this house is now plywood siding and aluminum windows. It is, however, considered a contributor, contributor to a national district, which is, which holds court. It, it holds sway over just about everything. So being that it's considered as a contributor to this historic district, we want to save as much of the, of the flavor of it as we can, and I think we're, we, I think we will achieve that. I think it actually will go back closer to where it was originally than it is now. The, the little round window that you see over the French doors, and the French doors below that are original, and that, and that one window upstairs is original, they're all staying, as is the board and bat siding on that wall, and it's one of the few places where the board and bat siding is left. But we will then take this plywood off and re-skin it with board and bat siding on the whole original portion. So what will, what will be left will be, or what we will present, will be something fairly. So, what will be left will be, or what we will present, will be something fairly close to what it was originally and in its original shape, which is considered the contributing factor. The bel-cast curve to the roof, the somewhat quirky barge rafters and decorations, which make it fun. It's a little bit whimsical. And it'll stay that way. The new portion then will be able to be clearly recognized as a new portion and will be different than the old portion. And that was something that we worked on quite a bit. This has been, this has gone through quite a few revisions to get it to the place where it is now. So, that being said, there's one thing I'd like to correct in the body of the staff report, and that is that it's called out as 1762 existing square feet. It's not. It's 1,156 square foot feet, and the addition is 606 square feet. Bring in the total to 1,762 square feet. So, if you look on, what I have is page 46, under conditions at the bottom, where it says consists of a construction of 606 square foot addition to a 1764 square foot single-family home should read to an 1,156 square foot. So, the total is 1,750. So, with that, I urge you to approve the project, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions of the applicant?
So, you mentioned keeping the board and bat on the front elevation?
Mm-hmm.
I'm noticing that the drawing, the actual rendering is shingle, and on the plans it's shingle.
The, oh, what I was referring to was on the front elevation of the existing house. So, specifically, the shingles were placed on the addition to differentiate that from the existing house.
Right, okay. So, actually, from the street, I guess at an angle, you'd still be able to see the original house, but not directly on.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant?
I'll ask my question now. On the stairway that goes up to the bedrooms off the patio, I had concerns about that stairway going up because you're going to have to have two exterior doors within the house because basically you've created another entrance there. And I don't know if I heard this correctly or not, but part of the reasoning for doing that had to do with floor area ratios or...
No, primarily it had to do with having the upstairs, one of the upstairs bedrooms, what we call the bunk room, not be a walk-through room. And this was to relieve that situation so that they could use the outside stairway in lieu of going through the bunk room.
I mean, I'll be honest with you. I've been in, you know, this business so long. To me, what you're building is a second unit because you have an exterior stairway coming in, an exterior door. You have two bedrooms. I even see a place that you could put the kitchen and the bathroom. You know, you've got the bathroom there. So, that becomes a real concern to me. And so, if I can't convince my other commissioners to, you know, remove that stairway, because if you did, you know, the bathroom could shift over, they could butt against each other, which seems like, you know, construction-wise is a good thing, and you would actually gain the square footage that you're using for the stairway, which you could put into the bunk room to make it a little bit bigger so you could have a wall to go across the bunk room.
I think preferably, if you'd like to condition it, you know, if the commission would like to condition it that there be a deed restriction on the back so that that could not be turned into another unit, I think that would be the preferable way to go. That stairway as it is now is not counted as in the FAR because it's an exterior stairway. And so, we wouldn't gain any square footage by doing that.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is you would gain square footage with inside your second story if you don't have that stairway there and you don't have a landing that's got two exterior doors on either side of the landing. I mean, it would become much more of a sort of a normal house, not having those two exterior doors there. And, you know, I think that design-wise, it would give you a bit more space in the bunk room. So, if you say, well, you know, we're losing a bit of space, closing off the bunk room a bit more, so it doesn't seem so much like people are walking through that room.
More to the point, if it becomes the commission's pleasure, it would be better to just remove the stairway and connect the bunk room with the rear without those doorways and just wall it in. I would prefer to see that done as a condition and have it acceptable to the planning director, however you would like to condition it. But I would prefer not to move the stairwell, of course.
So, as long as you're up there and we're discussing things like this, I wonder if the applicant would mind enclosing the garbage in the garage, just putting a little wall or a little pony wall or something so that, because since the garage has to be open due to floodwaters...
Right.
People from the, people might be able to see it, neighbors or whatever.
Sure. That would be fine.
Okay.
I think we'll find a way to do that.
Yeah, I figured you could. Okay, thank you.
So, I'm having a little trouble figuring out the parking here. Existing, there are sort of three spaces...
Sort of three spaces, yeah.
Sort of three small spaces in front of the house. And your proposal is for two covered spaces, the garage?
There are two covered spaces plus the third, which actually, they have a Nissan Leaf which fits in that third space. And that's, so they'll have a plug-in for their, that's a very small car.
Is that a covered space also, the third space?
Yes.
But they're all eight-and-a-half feet wide?
No, the EV space is not even designated here, but it's shown on the plot plan. It's the space in front of the gate.
8.5 by 18 cover, double-covered garage, you think that's workable?
Absolutely. Do you know what a standard car is these days? If you take a Mercedes 250SL, it's 15 feet. The days of Cadillacs are long gone.
How about F-150s?
F-150s, they go in 16 and a half, 17 feet.
I'd like to see two F-150s in there.
It'd be difficult.
I wasn't too concerned about the 18 feet because you do have a few feet before you get to the street. So, even if a car sticks out a little bit, it's not going to be like the driveways up on Riverview Terrace where it sticks out onto the sidewalk if it's...
Yeah, but it's the width that makes it pretty, I mean, probably will only end up being used by one car in many cases.
Well, I think actually you can easily fit two cars in there, and the reason is that the sidewalls are not enclosed. If the sidewalls were enclosed, I would tend to agree with you, but not being enclosed, it helps a lot.
I understand this is a narrow lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Another comment, the second-story windows, are any of them frosted?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
The one on the front elevation is indicated that it's got these crosshatches over it. I believe it's your bathroom window on this front.
That's, you know, that's in the upstairs bedroom.
So, I mean, on the plan, it looks like something's happening there.
Yeah, so it's a diamond pattern in that window, just to have it as a feature window.
So, it's not really a diamond-patterned window, it's a clear glass window?
No, it does have a diamond pattern.
Oh, it does have a diamond?
Yeah. And all the windows will be wood windows.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Derek.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for additional comments and discussion.
Can someone on the commission help me with condition four and tell me what a no-rise study is?
That is a FEMA floodplain regulation. It's required to show that by adding new square footage in a floodway that you wouldn't create a rise in the flood elevation.
Oh, okay.
Other comments? Gail, you want to go first?
Well, I do share your concerns about the stairs. I thought about that. And I'd just like to have a discussion about the pros and cons of asking them to leave it off versus putting something in the deed of trust and, you know, the pros and cons of those two. Could staff...
Personally, I'm not a big fan of conditioning projects to comply with municipal code if they added a second unit. It wouldn't be permitted. It'd be illegal. I don't know what extra benefit a deed restriction would have. We could still enforce without it. I think if the commission is concerned of that converting to a second unit, probably the best approach is to eliminate that stairwell.
I can also add that if the stairwell is removed because it does not count towards the floor area ratio, if you did not want to make any modifications to how it's proposed at the exterior walls or moving any area around, that you should probably consider an exception to the floor area ratio because it's right at the maximum floor area ratio. So, if you want the design to stay the same but take out the staircase, but as Commissioner Westman was suggesting, moving things around internally, that would require a part of a variance for the floor area ratio. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I brought up, I'd much rather see the variance for the floor area ratio. I think they've done a nice job dealing with the historic structure. I mean, the main view of it that you see in most of the photographs in Capitola is from the river, and there are a number of old photographs that show this house here. Since they have to comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards, which personally I don't always agree with, of having the new addition look completely different from the existing house, but, you know, they have to do that, and that's one of the requirements. And I think they've done a nice job with the addition and adding the space. And I don't have any problems with the parking variance. As I said, you know, there is some space between where the carport ends before you get to the street, so the length's not a problem for me. And as Mr. Van Alstine mentioned, not having walls, and if this was an enclosed garage, it would be difficult because you couldn't open your garage doors this way.
Car doors, I mean. Your car doors.
Your car.
You couldn't open your car doors.
Yeah, you couldn't open your car doors. So, I don't have any problem with that. My one issue really was that, you know, having been in Capitola for a long time, I see properties turn over and people have the best of intentions. And, you know, this looks like a second unit, easily can be a second unit. If I was buying a new property and I'm coming in and buying it, I would think, oh, well, it's already got an exterior door, an exterior stairway. I can just make it a second unit. And I think in this neighborhood in particular, where parking and a lot of other issues are a problem, I would like to see the stairway go and us grant an exception for those. I think we're talking about 40 or 50 additional square feet so that the design can stay the same. I wouldn't want them to have to go back and do a lot of design changes, but that would be my choice if I got it.
Well, quite frankly, I'm more empathetic to spending years of the family trying to get this thing to a point where we have agreement. I think it's great that we have some type of consensus between the different historians. I also am not a strong proponent of the Secretary of Interior Standards, and so I think if we've come to this far with it, I think it's a great deal. And then additionally on top of that, I don't share the concern about the staircase. I think when we start making assumptions of something that may happen, and it is an illegal, it would be an illegal second unit, I hate to hold people hostage to something that is a potential that could happen. And, you know, I just commend them for getting to the point where it's at, and I think it's a good project.
So, I tend to agree on the second unit issue. I'm kind of struggling in my own mind as to how strongly I want to fight against people converting parts of their house to a second unit in terms of the housing supply and the issues of living in the village here. And, you know, it's potentially a parking issue, but then if you have another family member in there, they may have a car too. So, maybe it doesn't change the parking, and then what's the harm? And there's good in that there are more, there's more housing stock. So, I guess I would say there's an ordinance against using this as a second unit, and I'm comfortable just relying on that rather than trying to build in protections. As far as the historic, we're on the cusp of a new zoning code, and I think the historic element is going to be changing quite a bit here. So, this is pointing up why we need to do that.
Although not probably in this district.
Not in this.
Oh, it's not in this district, okay. So, anyway, but they went through it. They've made it through that over a couple of years now, and I congratulate them and let's see this project moving forward.
So, I have questions that I'm going to have to ask now because I hate being in this position. If this house were not in the historic district, if it were someplace else, would it have enough square footage to have an additional unit?
No, there's 3,096 square feet on the property, so you need to have 5,000 square feet in order to have a second unit.
Okay, so it would be clearly an illegal additional unit. And I know we've seen those in the village, but the only time we really have any opportunity to find them is when there's a remodel. Is that kind of our enforcement on that item at this point?
You know, most often we hear from neighbors that'll observe, you know, somebody else coming in and out regularly that appears to be living there. Potentially, they try to add a new address. We'll find out that way.
What would our recourse be if we got a call from a neighbor that said, hey, they've added a...
Well, like any code enforcement case, we'd investigate, verify whether or not the allegation were true. And if so, we would require them to cease and desist using that as a second unit. Of course, if somebody was living there, we try to be reasonable not to displace somebody unfairly, give them some time. But, you know, given the situation, that it wouldn't be permissible, at least under today's standards, we would just simply require them to cease the use.
Is this property in a vacation rental zone?
It is, just, it's right on the cusp.
The blue house across the street, the run next to Mr. Graves' house, is a vacation rental.
So, here's the map.
I think it's right outside of it.
Just outside?
See the pathway?
Yeah.
So, then they could not do vacation rentals?
No.
I don't really share the concern about it being a second unit only because I live in a home where a second-story staircase for my own enjoyment of my house really became, you know, a necessary item. Since we are a beach community and you have families that have, you know, kids that are going to be coming and going, having to pass through one of the bedrooms to get to the other bedrooms is, in my mind, a hardship for just the enjoyment of the home for the people that live there. So, I have a hard time requiring that they remove the staircase. In looking at the floor plan, it's not, I mean, it'd be an awfully tiny kitchen if they decided to turn it into a second unit. So, I don't really have a problem with that piece of it. From the historical perspective, though, I think you've done a really good job of coming to a compromise and preserving a historic view and a historic, you know, look and feel that we really want, especially in that district. So, I would like to entertain a motion on this item if someone's willing to make So I would like to entertain a motion on this item, if someone's willing to make one.
So it sounds to me as though we don't have a council or a planning commission majority to change the plans. And as long as Commissioner Westman is okay with that,
I'm fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the change in conditions for the stormwater and changing condition number one, square footage. And I don't think we need to write a condition in... Well, we could write a condition for the garbage enclosure if we wanted to. I don't think they have a problem with that. It's not a big deal. So I would prefer that. Any other? Am I forgetting something? That's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Shall we do a roll call vote?
No, I'm fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unanimously passed. Good luck. Thank you.
I'd like to tell your applicants, you did a great job for them. They did a great job. You did a great job. Y'all did. I can't wait to see it, man. So happy we're getting these kind of...
Next item is 1601 41st Avenue. A design permit and conditional use permit for expansion of a nursery, exterior remodel permanent, and seasonal outdoor displays, and a height exception for a 16-foot high fence for Orchard Supply Hardware in the Community Commercial Zoning District. Staff report, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. On your desk this evening, there were modifications that were submitted by the applicant. I also sent out an email previously, earlier today. And the change to the plans are on the back table with a red highlight around the modifications that were made for the public to review. Okay, so it's 1601 41st Avenue. The applicant has applied for a design permit and a conditional use permit for a 744-square-foot expansion of the nursery, an exterior remodel, and seasonal and permanent outdoor display areas for the existing Orchard Supply Hardware store. The applicant also included new signs for the main entrance and the entrance over the nursery. This is the site plan for the expansion. The area in blue is the nursery. The applicant is proposing to expand the nursery by 744 square feet. The applicant is also requesting approval of two permanent outdoor display areas on either side of the entryway, shown here in dark blue. This is one of the modifications. Previously, that area extended in front of the Sees Candy and the Ice Cream Store. The applicant shortened those to only be in front of the Orchard Supply. A seasonal outdoor display area is proposed in the center of the parking lot for the month of December and also 30 days in early spring. That area will displace 12 parking spots as well as a cart collection area within the parking lot. The applicant added a three-foot-high wall on the front facade for an area to store shopping carts to the left of the entrance. The permanent outdoor displays and the seasonal outdoor displays are part of the conditional use permit for the retail use. When reviewing a conditional use permit, the planning commission may add conditions to the permit to mitigate any impacts of the proposed use. Within the staff report, conditions 2 through 11 were added to mitigate future impacts from the temporary and seasonal display areas and ensure that the areas are maintained over time. This slide shows the existing hardware store elevation at the top, and the bottom is the proposed. Let's take a closer look. This is the existing Orchard Supply Hardware store. It's characterized by wood shingle mansored roof and a covered entry. This image shows the front facade on either side of the entryway. As you can see, there's a planting area along the front of the building, and the shopping carts are stored in front of the planters. Within the proposal, the applicant would like to remove the existing planters and utilize this area for a permanent outdoor display. The plans include a four-feet sidewalk in front of the display to maintain the ADA excess. This image is the front elevation as proposed within the remodel. A new exposed beam truss will be installed over the entryway at the front of the building with new standing seam metal roof. The existing stone veneer on both sides of the entryway will be replaced with stucco. The applicant added a three-foot-high wall to the left of the entryway for the store carts, shopping carts. Here is an image from their Melipita store. In this image, you can see the truss system as well as the oversized metal post on either side of the truss. In the staff report, staff suggested that the proposed design is in compliance with the relative 41st Avenue Design Guidelines. Upon receiving the photos, I did become concerned with the scale of the proposed posts. They're approximately six feet wide. The 41st Avenue Design Guideline Number 7 states, "Buildings shall use design elements in public areas which provide a sense of human scale. Elements of pedestrian interest shall be included at the ground floor level." These large posts are out of scale with the truss system, and it is intended to hold up. The planning commission may want to consider limiting the size of the posts to create a more human scale relative to the beams of the truss system. Now we will look at the south elevation of the building. The exterior of the smaller commercial tenants along the north and south of the structure will be freshly painted to create a uniform updated look throughout the entire multi-tenant building. The south elevation will be updated with a new 16-foot-high wrought iron fence, creating visibility into the nursery area and updating, as well as updating, the trash enclosures. The applicant is requesting an exception for the 16-foot-high steel fence. The top image shows the garden center as it exists today. Within the new proposal, the new walls will be made of split-phase CMU to match existing walls at the site. The walls will be painted to complement the building color scheme. A steel gate, as shown in the lower right-hand corner, is proposed for the doors to the trash enclosures. The trash enclosures are shown as covered within the plans to ensure that they are covered at the time of submittal. Recently, we got these new plans in with the new fence extension above the trash. It's a stormwater requirement that the trash is covered. And to ensure that, I would like to add a condition of approval to ensure that the trash enclosures remain covered within the modifications that were recently submitted. This image shows an example of the steel fence installed in another location. The high-end architectural fencing complements the building and is inviting for the customers to look into and enter the nursery from the south side. This is an image of the back of the property facing 38th Avenue. The rear elevation, the only major change, is the applicant plans to wrap the CMU wall and the 16-foot-high steel fence around this elevation as well. This will add to the architectural detail as viewed from 38th Avenue. The planter beds will be spruced up with additional shrubs, perennials, and new mulch around the trees. The applicant is also requesting approval of two new wall signs. The zoning code allows each wall sign to be no greater than one square foot of sign for each linear foot of business frontage. The front elevation is 150 linear feet. The proposed sign on the front elevation is six feet tall by 20 feet wide and approximately 110 square feet in size due to the curved edges. The nursery sign will be located on the south elevation. The south elevation is 165 feet in length. The proposed sign is 13 feet wide by four feet tall and approximately 54 square feet, also in compliance with the standard. Staff would, as I previously mentioned, like to add a condition of approval that at the time of building permit submittal, the garbage collection area shall be covered with a roof, and a detail of the covered garbage collection area will be included in the plans. Also, this past week, I was contacted by Roger Bernstein of Orchard Supply Hardware. Mr. Bernstein requested that condition number 11 be amended to allow the seasonal display area when the store is open rather than from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., as the condition suggested. The condition was based on the hours provided at the time, but he'd rather not have them tied to specific hours within the condition and just allow it to occur when it is open. So staff recommends approval of application 15-067 as conditioned. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
So how does this proposed display area relate to what's been going on there regularly in the parking area on almost every weekend?
So the proposed display area would bring it into compliance and would have an official approval with conditions that we can enforce. We've done quite a bit of code enforcement over... I've been here almost two years and have been out several times and written letters. So this, when they brought in the application, we asked them to...
So what I'm understanding, I mean, this has been a big issue to some people. Is that it kind of, it changes kind of the character of the shopping area there when there's a kind of unsightly outdoor display area almost every weekend. And you're telling me that that's been out of compliance? And that now we're going to have some specific conditions, and they're only going to have outdoor display in conformity with those conditions?
That is what...
That's the hope?
That's the hope. And I'd like, I think the applicant can speak to that as well.
Any other questions of staff? This is the time for the public. Is the applicant here? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas De Torres. I am the applicant on behalf of Orchard Supply Hardware. Ms. Catan here made a nice presentation as to the scope of our proposed remodel project. We are excited about this whole remodel as well. We think it's going to brighten up the shopping center quite a bit. We think it'll be good for the surrounding community as well, and we hope that the planning commission agrees with us.
Can I ask that question? Please.
We got the revised plans.
Yes.
And the one I got was so small I couldn't read. So for the area that you're proposing to use for the shopping carts, how many shopping carts will fit in that space?
There should be about, there should be about 50 to 60 shopping carts that can fit within that space.
Okay, so how wide is it? I mean, how big is it?
It's basically going to be three feet wide by about 15 feet long.
15 feet long?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was wondering if it was possible for it to be a little longer because right now, the shopping carts out there seem to be a bit unsightly in my mind. And I think like Nob Hill did a great job in closing their shopping cart area as have some other spaces. And I'm just a little concerned that, you know, it might be too small. It seems like if, you know, you could extend it another five feet, so it'd be closer to 20 feet long.
Yeah, when we had originally discussed this detail with Ms. Catan here, we were thinking someplace between 10 to maybe 20 feet in length. So five feet, I don't think would be, would be an issue.
Because I think that would just give a little more space for, make certain that there's...
Yeah.
Because there's no other place for the carts to go if they're not in there. There's not room along the sidewalk right now.
We do, on the site plan that you showed previously, there is a space in the actual parking lot in that green area towards the top.
But that's going to go away when you're using it for outdoor display, is what was indicated.
There's going to be a portion of it that will still have a shopping cart corral in. So the rest of it, yes, it will be used for outdoor display, but there, in the upper right corner, it will be a shopping cart corral as well.
I mean, I'm wondering, would it be possible to sort of move the outdoor display down a little bit so that shopping cart, I mean, there's nothing worse than getting out there in your car and having a cart nowhere to put it. And then, you know, they end up stacked all the way around. So it would seem to me it might make some sense to keep that shopping cart corral open for people to use. Am I the only one who's worried about the shopping carts?
I do have a question. I had heard that there might be an additional shopping cart storage area inside the store when the remodel is finished?
Yeah, they will have an additional cart storage area in the front, right behind the main entrance. So that cart corral will hold between 20 to 30 carts on the inside, too. Thus, it'll offset the overflow on the site and in front of the building as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
So I'm going to follow up on, you heard my comments to staff. So tell me, from a Orchard's standpoint, what's been going on there? Why have you been having merchandise all over the place? And how do we know you're not going to continue doing that?
Well, this is one of many Orchard remodels that have been taking place within the past 12 months throughout the Bay Area. We have, we have about a dozen, if not more, locations along the peninsula and the East Bay. And, you know, a lot of jurisdictions are asking us to conform to this because, you know, all this time, you know, that's what's been taking place.
Are there different regime in place right now?
Well, store planning is store planning.
Yeah, but I mean, is it the same basic ownership structure?
I would say so. But the store planning team that we have behind all of these sites, I mean, they're very aware of, you know, the outdoor display restrictions that a lot of jurisdictions, both here and in the surrounding areas, you know, are concerned about. So, yeah.
Other questions?
I do. I have another question. So for the, in the blue, the continuous outdoor displays,
Yes.
will those be built-in shelving? Or will it be something that's rolled in at night or...
Well, I believe one of the conditions of approval is saying that they have to be brought in after hours of operation. That's correct, right? Yeah, yeah.
So they'll be rolling racks? Are they, will they be similar to... Are plant materials going to be going on those?
Absolutely.
That's plant materials? Okay. So it'll look similar to the racks that you have now with plant materials on them?
Sure.
Are you planning an upgrade of that or...
Usually their outdoor displays, they like to refer to them as temporary displays because the merchandise is always swapped out from old to new, probably by the month. So there's always going to be something else there next time you visit the store. So...
Right, I'm just talking about the actual display unit.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that will always remain the same, won't it?
Correct.
I mean, that's not going to change.
No, no, no.
So there's no plans for that? What are the plans for that, is what I'm asking? I mean, what will those look like?
They're going to reflect plants that are very similar to the perimeter merchandise that's sold in the garden center also. So in a sense, it's going to, it's going to entice the customer that enters in at the front to, you know, visit the garden center that's at the back also. So, yeah.
So that's all the questions I have.
So on the front columns, which is brought up by the planning staff, actually, those concern me, too. I even came up with some visual aids. I went to Orchard Supplies' website. And it seems like you have done a few different things with those big front columns on different designs of different stores.
Yeah, they've ranged from about, you know, about six feet wide to eight feet wide, depending on the location. We try not to go less than about five feet just because this entry design is very iconic, very similar to the McDonald's golden arches, if you will. So this is kind of the Orchard trademark for a lot of the stores that they're trying to remodel in the surrounding areas.
Yeah. Luckily, in our 41st Avenue Design Guidelines, it says we don't go along with sort of trademark buildings and stores. And I think that's been a valuable characteristic here in Capitola. And my only request, I mean, my first request would be, I simply think that they should be wood columns that go down so it looks like it's part of the whole truss system and design there. You know, if you couldn't do something like that, then something more in, you know, the two-to-three-foot range would, I would think, be much more in scale with sort of the design there and what we're talking about.
Well, right now, as you can see on the photos here, the color of the wood truss is painted in the light gray tone. And that tone carries down through the color. is painted in the light gray tone, and that tone carries down through the columns on each side, too.
Right. But you do them in stone and a lot of other materials in different places. So it's not like this is the only design that can happen.
I would say...
And I've got photo evidence of it, so I know you do.
I would say in other surrounding cities, we just finished a job up over in San Siti and Golita, and also a mountain view up in the north also that had very similar finishes that you see here. So again, it's the icon.
Yeah, I mean, I know that you do, you know. I guess my question is, and maybe someone else can help me, so it's not just me hanging out here.
Sure, sure.
You know, I mean, I...
I'd love to step in. I don't have a problem with the corrugated. I think if it went down to three feet, it would be in scale. I mean, you can look at the building. They do look pretty massive. Actually, I don't understand why someone would want two massive roadblocks in front of their store.
I've got more over here.
To me, the more you can see in a store, the better.
Sure.
You know, I think it's not going to change a lot. I think three feet's not going to change a lot, and I don't mind the corrugated.
Okay.
What do you think?
Well, I agree. I'm not a big proponent of it being the width. I think it lends itself to putting posters and stuff like that up there, advertisement type stuff. It lends itself to tagging it, and structurally, it's not needed. I think it just kind of takes away from the design. So I would kind of concur with the rest of the commission here.
If I can mention one last item here, you'll see in this sample here that the scale of the truss is relatively large. It's almost oversized, if you will. Okay? And a lot of the, for some jurisdictions, we tend to say that, well, hell, if the scale of that piece is a bit oversized also, then, you know, the scale of the columns, you know, it might seem to be oversized, but in the big picture with the overall facade, it kind of goes with the scale, too.
Well, I actually went and visited a couple of your Orchard stores, and I don't think it's really in scale. And my suggestion would be that we let you work with our planning staff, and we say something like, they're no wider than three feet. And then you and the planning staff can, you know, work out the details of how it's going to fit if other people agreed with that.
Sure.
How wide are they now in the plans? Six feet wide?
Right now, they're six feet wide, so, yeah. So the sample that you're looking at here, that's actually eight feet wide. That's from our Milpitas store, so six feet wide would be as wide as what you're seeing there, like 12 inches off on each side.
I had a question, just a functional question, and it sounds like from what you're saying, there's no real functional use for them. They're not blocking in front of a door or anything.
No, we usually place them behind the walkways so that customers with shopping carts can, you know, move by them without having to go around them, too. And that's going to be the same idea for the Capitola location, too. We don't plan to impede on the walkways for access to the main entrance into the store either.
I mean, I think overall, your new design is great. I love the nursery and the angled door, and I think it's great. People are going to be able to enter. I like the fence. I like the fact that you're improving the whole back of the store and that entrance along 38th Avenue.
Thank you.
You know, it's just, overall, I think it's going to be a great improvement up there if those can only be three feet.
Yeah, no, no. We very much look forward to brightening up the existing shopping center to make it not only more inviting for, you know, the shopping center patrons themselves, but also, like I said before, the surrounding community as well, so.
Any other questions? I have one question. On the plans for the area that's going to be seasonal out in the parking lot, it says on the plans that the final location is to be determined. Is it planned for that area where it's drawn on there? Or have you guys really decided if it's, you're going to move it within the parking lot?
The area that's currently shown on the site plan that Ms. Catan had up earlier, that's going to be the approximate area for that outdoor display. That's not going to change.
Okay.
If we want to shift it down a bit to avoid the cart corrals, like you mentioned earlier, that's perfectly okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, who'd like to?
I'd like to start on another issue that we haven't really discussed. Thank you very much, Mr. Di Torres. So I'm a business owner here in Capitola, and I feel like one of my jobs here on the Planning Commission is to support business because it's not only important to me as a business owner, but as a former council member, I watch the budget, and I know that we are very reliant on 41st Avenue and our other business areas, and so I'm always pro-business. That being said, I'm always looking out for every kind of business and making sure, trying to make sure that everything is equal with all businesses. And I'm a little leery of, in fact, I'm against giving them the seasonal. I think against the wall, I feel okay about. The seasonal, I feel, we don't give to other people right now, and I do think we're going to be changing that in our ordinances. I do think outdoor displays are a thing of the future, and I do think we should have them. I think we can write new ordinances that make them look great and that will enhance all business districts. Maybe we have a different one for each type of business district. Now, we don't have that for 41st Avenue. We've just had to tell Whole Foods to pull it back and make them take away quite a bit of the stuff that they had out in front. And I'm concerned with fairness. I think what we need to do with the seasonal display is ask them to do what we ask others to do with Christmas trees and things like that, and that is to come in for a special parking lot or seasonal display, like the Christmas trees or whatever, and do that for the next couple of years. You would get a permit for it. I'm sure it would be granted. And then, when our codes are rewritten, then you would be designing that outdoor space to conform with our codes. Not only that, I would like to see that the two against-the-wall permanent displays would sunset in two years so that after we've written our codes, we can come back, review whether those still fit our current codes and our design guidelines, and then ask them to, it doesn't sound like it's going to be any permanent display, so, you know, you may have to make some changes at that time. Those are the two things I'd really like to see. I'm very, very concerned that we give things to certain people because they ask for it or because they've been naughty, and now they're going to be a little bit less naughty, or they're going to be naughty within the guidelines. And then the good guys who never do anything wrong, they're the ones who get penalized. So I'm hoping that the commission agrees with me.
Right. So I'd ask a couple of questions. So like with Whole Foods, when it got approved, it got approved to have a certain amount of display outside the entry of the store?
I don't think it had any, I don't think there was any approval for that. Do you remember?
Well, there were for the tables on the south side.
Right, right.
I mean, because we now have a situation where, you know, Nob Hill, they now have flowers and stuff out in front of Nob Hill. I mean, it seems to be this growing trend.
So do, so does the drugstore in the Kings Plaza, and I think the grocery store does it, and Palace Art does it. You know, everybody's doing it. So I think for us to allow one person, we just have to be aware that that changes what we're doing on 41st Avenue. So now we're going to ask each person to come in for the next two years and get a, I don't know. It just seems to me to be muddying the waters at a time when we're going to be changing things anyway. And I think the solution for it is to ask them to do a permit the way we've done the others that we have, that we allow Christmas trees and things like that for the time being.
Well, I mean, it is a tough one because, you know, having been here, spent years fighting with Orchard Supply about their, you know, outdoor displays, and it seemed to vary depending on who was the manager of the store at the time, whether or not they complied or didn't comply. And, I mean, I can remember having the thoughts myself, you know, what we need to do is come up with a system where people can get a conditional use permit and have outdoor seating or outdoor displays. And so, you know, when I saw it, I was happy to see that we were finally actually going to deal with this issue, and they were going to have to get a permit, and there were going to be some conditions on it because, you know, it's hard to enforce all of these little things that we say that we don't want. And, you know, like the flowers in front of the pharmacy in Kings Plaza, I mean, I think they've been there for years. You know, I was a little upset when I saw the red boxes going out on the sidewalks in front of buildings, and I was told they get conditional use permits for that. So I guess I'm rambling a bit, but I would like to see them get a permit for it because...
So do you think we should ask the other merchants who are doing that on the 41st Avenue to come in for conditional uses during this two-year period of time? I think they should be able, they should be allowed to have these, what they're asking for. I just think the mechanism should be more temporary until we get our guidelines together in a couple of years, and then have them come back and meet the guidelines. I'm not saying they shouldn't do it, I'm just...
So could we approve it for a two-year conditional permit?
So a couple of comments. From my perspective, I think the conditional use permit process would be perfectly appropriate to have a temporary seasonal type of use. You can condition it as part of the overall permit. And that's been the response we often give when we get the complaint with Whole Foods and others. If they start encroaching into their parking areas with outdoor displays, tell them, stop. If you really want to do it, you can come in and amend your conditional use permit. Typically, they're not interested in that, and we have to enforce. The parking lot sale is this weird, uncodified process that we have. It's not in the code. Our research was that there was, I think, a council action minute where a council person said, we're going to have this process, but it never got into the code. So it's kind of this awkward process that I always cringe at when we use it because I don't think it's, it's not kosher.
Right.
So, yeah.
I have a question for staff. Under Condition Number 19, it says the applicant was granted a conditional use permit for the outdoor displays. It says was. Is that something on Condition Number 19?
I believe that's speaking as if the project were approved tonight, that that would be part of the use type that was permitted.
That's the new, and thank you, that's very nice. That's the new conditional use permit enforcement clause that you're using.
That's right.
Thank you. But can I address this issue? The rest of the project, I think, is great. It's a big improvement in the nursery and all, and that's all real nice. It's just this outdoor display thing that bothers me. First of all, I think it's, this is a completely different animal than the other examples you were giving. I mean, they basically take over the parking lot there, and stuff is strewn all over the place. And, I mean, it's just not what you want, and it's not good for the future of the center there. Some jurisdictions, you can't come in for permits when you're that much in violation. I mean, you're just prohibited from seeking new permits because of that. And here, you know, we apparently are more lenient, so we comes in, and then we're going to give them a permit, and then I'm not comfortable with where we're going to be at that point. And the conditions are pretty unclear and a little vague to me about where and when, and, I mean, it's, I think we ought to be really tough on this and kind of do as little as we can and wait for the issue to be addressed in the new ordinance.
So if we approve this without that conditional use permit, they could come back in and apply for that separately when they were more clear about exact times and locations and how they were going to do it.
Right, or they could just get the quasi-legal permit.
Yeah, our intent will be to create a new temporary use permit type in the code to address things like Christmas tree sales, pumpkin sales, and...
But, you know, when we do the new ordinances and they're approved, hopefully, we will have, you know, conditional use permits for, you know, permanent outdoor uses because I think we all want that.
Okay, TJ, you're on.
No, I'm good. I'm right on track with you. I just, I'm happy to see that we're kind of some type of conformity, and I think that's one of the reasons for here today, not just because of the remodel, but this whole conditional use permits. It's obviously been an issue at Orchard Supply for quite some time, so I'm glad that we're addressing it. I can live with it, the way that you're recommending it.
Good. Okay.
So are we ready to make a motion?
I'm ready to hear a motion. Somebody would like to word it.
There's a lot of...
Somebody, some people have to help me with this one because I don't think I got everything. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the, tell me what we're approving, the conditional use permit.
And the design.
The design permit and conditional use permit for the expansion of the nursery, the exterior modifications, the exception for the 16-foot fence, and the sign permit. I would like to put a condition in there that if they want to have the outdoor display area that's in the parking lot, then they need to come back and either apply for a separate conditional use permit for that, or apply for the temporary permits to do things like Christmas trees or pumpkins through the process that the city currently has. I would like a condition that the two posts on the front be redesigned to be no wider than three feet, and the applicant can work with the planning staff on the final design details for those posts. That the area for the storage of the parking carts be extended by five feet so that it's 20 feet in length, and that the trash enclosures be covered as required by the store management plan. And, any others?
And if the commission agrees that the permanent displays sunset in two years or upon our, the adoption of our new ordinances so that they can...
How about the adoption of our new ordinances?
So they can conform to those.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
So the seasonal display conditions need to come out, then?
Right, the seasonal display conditions need to come out because we're not approving, when I read it, I left out the outdoor sales part for, in the parking lot.
Clarifications for the sunset clause? Did you say that it would sunset at the adoption of the ordinance? Or, I think they would need some time afterwards, once the ordinance is adopted, to bring it into compliance, whether that be six months, a year?
Six months after the ordinances have been adopted.
Yeah, because, you know, it's likely that no one will catch it for another two years after that anyway, so.
But do you want them to sunset, or just be more defined?
Whatever terminology the staff feels is appropriate.
So that it works with...
That it would terminate after the, six months after the new ordinances are adopted.
They refer to as a temporary permit.
Temporary permanent display.
Nothing is so permanent as a temporary government.
So then the conditions...
Eleven would come out?
Condition 11, we don't need to change the hours because that's the seasonal display, but that's the only one that is specific to the seasonal display and not the outdoor displays that we're allowing.
Right. The outdoor displays in front of the store there, it's just the one that's in the parking lot that we're talking about.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Good luck. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 809 Bay Avenue. This is a design permit and conditional use permit for a private outdoor seating area and onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine for the Nob Hill Grocery Store. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you is an application for a design permit and conditional use permit to allow for the sale, excuse me, of beer and wine in the outdoor dining area at Nob Hill. The subject property is located at the north end of Bay Avenue, adjacent to the SoCal Creek Corridor. The entire Capitola Center, outlined in blue, is zone community commercial. The properties to the south are zone single-family residential, and across Bay Avenue to the east of Nob Hill are commercial and office uses and a multifamily residential senior housing facility. This slide shows Nob Hill Store as viewed from Bay Avenue. This slide shows Nob Hill Store as viewed from Bay Avenue. The proposed outdoor dining will occur under the overhang and trellis of the existing building. That red shading shows it. In 2004, the Planning Commission approved of a design permit and conditional use permit for an expansion and remodel to the existing Nob Hill Store. As a part of that approval, an outdoor dining area was approved of as an outside quasi-public seating area, but never built. Nob Hill's 2015 proposal includes an interior remodel and outdoor dining area with beer and wine sales. The proposed outdoor dining area will have alcohol sales and thus making it a private, not quasi-public area. The private outdoor eating area requires a design permit for the modification to an existing CUP and design permit, as well as a conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine. In addition, the applicant will need to obtain an entertainment permit from the Police Department prior to having any live entertainment, which would be subject to the Police Department's standards. In addition, Nob Hill is currently in the process of obtaining a building permit for interior work, which does not require Planning Commission approval. Nob Hill plans to remodel and refurnish most of, much of the interior space, including turning the cafe area into a taproom. The proposed 1,561 square foot outdoor private dining area will contain a total of 14 tables and 40 chairs. The portion, or there is a portion of the outdoor dining area located under the existing building. You can see it shaded in blue. The remaining area is enclosed by a three-foot tall metal gate, outlined in purple. There are two proposed exterior openings in the gate on the eastern and western edges that contain latches and self-closing hinges to ensure the gate remains shut. The outdoor seating area contains a portable stage in the center, shown in yellow. The applicant would like to have live amplified acoustic music here. The stage will be stored in the background during times, or in the back room during times with no live performances. Above the stage is a proposed TV, highlight in red. Nob Hill is also proposing to place six speakers around the outdoor seating area, creating a surround sound system. These are identified by those red stars. The applicant would like to have live amplified acoustic music from 12 to 10 p.m., seven days a week. The applicant has proposed to have a small portable stage where one to two performers max can provide live music and entertainment for the customers in the dining area. Music will be acoustic but amplified by the surround sound system. The performances will be held to three hours in length or shorter. Like I said previously, an entertainment permit would need to be obtained by the Police Department or through the Police Department prior to having any live performances. Here's the proposed gate around the exterior of the outdoor dining area. The gate area at the exterior is required by the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. This is required so that alcohol beverage consumption is confined to a delineated area. Nob Hill is proposing to operate the outdoor dining area under the same areas as the grocery, or under the same hours as the grocery store, 6 a.m. to 11 p.m., seven days a week. There will be no waiters and the drinks can only be consumed in the dining areas. For the food and non-alcoholic drinks, the plan is that customers will purchase items that are intended to be eaten at the main register or checkout area and then must enter the dining area to eat the food. For coffee drinks, wine, or beer, you're supposed to order at the counter or bar and then take your drink to any of the dining areas. There's a limit of one drink per customer per purchase and IDs are checked at this So Planning Staff and the Police Department had some concerns with the proposed hours of operation and the applicant's request to allow live amplified entertainment in the outdoor dining area. Although the proposed dining area is located within an existing commercial shopping center, the site is proximate to a senior living facility, a sleep center, and single-family residences which could be adversely impacted by the noise generated from this proposed use. Staff added an errata to this application, which were placed on your desks before this meeting. There's also some on the back table, altering our recommendation to the Planning Commission. Staff recommends the Planning Commission limit the hours of operation of the dining area from 6 to 11 to 8 a.m. to 9 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 8 a.m. to 11 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, as well as limiting the hours of alcohol consumption from 6 to 11 to 10 to 8, seven days a week. Additionally, staff recommends the Planning Commission limit the entertainment to acoustic music only and deny the use of the portable stage. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve application 1574, minus the outdoor stage and live music proposal and with the hours for alcohol service being limited to 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it. And there are three representatives from Nob Hill here, if you guys have any questions.
Okay. Can you go back to the first slide and, to where you had the red shading, red shaded area? It looked like it was a little bit short of where it...
Well, this was done in PowerPoint by me right before this, so it's, it's hard to make it completely accurate.
It does extend a little further out, though.
Yes, yes, it does.
And it, does it abut the shopping cart, little pony wall for the shopping cart? Is that what it, where it stops? Well, we can, I can ask the applicant.
Any other questions of staff?
Thanks, PowerPoint, though. I like your...
Yeah, no, I did. I had a question.
Go ahead.
So I'm not seeing, and I think it's because I'm not reading them right, but I'm not seeing how someone walks from Bay Avenue to the grocery store once this is in place.
There's still room around the outdoor dining area.
Looks okay from that picture, but from the map, I mean, from the plans, looks like they're in the street.
So, yeah. The current gate right now, that white picket fence, runs along this line. At the very bottom, you see that?
Yeah.
And then right up here. So there is several feet to walk around this way.
So they have to have four feet by...
It doesn't meet the ADA, sorry, it doesn't meet the ADA standards.
It does.
I had the Building Department check that.
There was a photograph that you had in the, in the staff report that kind of showed that. Do you have any overheads of the photographs that were in the staff report? Where the big ball is, there's a sort of a...
Yeah, I apologize, but that is not included in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, there it is.
You can, you can see the beach ball in this image partially, but...
And actually, that wave is a mosaic, set in mosaic, correct?
Right, yeah.
So, so people do wa, that's where we walk.
That's who you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask how wide that is, but it appears to me to be, you know, more than five feet wide at, you know, all, all places there. So there'd be a minimum of five feet on the outside of the fence, though it's still inside the sidewalk area, right?
I'm not sure on the specifics of the amount of feet. I just know it meets ADA standards.
Okay.
I believe it's a minimum of four around.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at this picture, down at the very bottom, you can see there's a dark line and it's delineated as the white picket fence.
Mm-hmm.
If you go back to the photograph, then you can see that white picket fence in the And we're going to be right where the white posts are with the trellis area. So it's about 12 feet from that, where we're going to put the fence, to where the white picket fence is, and all of that is walkable. So it's somewhere between 10 and 12 feet.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Applicant, please.
Well, we are, we're really excited to try to do this. This has been about...
And state your name, please.
I'm sorry. My name's Mike Gates. I'm with Sacramento Design Systems. I'm speaking on behalf of Rayleigh's and Nob Hill. So, you know, this area's been out there for about 10 years and unused and I think it's, there's been a lot of discussion about how to use this and, and finally, Rayleigh's and the developer have come up with a plan that they think is going to work. And when there was a change with Pete's Coffee and some other things, it kind of precipitated this move. So now there's the intent to try to use this area and try to make it a little more lively, bring the outside in a little bit to the area. We are excited about doing it. We, we really believe that the music is part of the ambiance and we understand the concerns and we're okay with some of the hours, but to not have the live music, we think, is an issue for us. So we'd like the Commission to at least consider maybe going against staff's recommendation and allowing the live music performances that we intend to have. Even if we have restricted hours, that would be great. In terms of the alcohol service, we would be okay with the hours of restriction, but we would probably still serve alcohol inside but not outside under those hours. So we would continue to serve alcohol up until the 11 o'clock hour or when the store closes. So we'd like to consider that also. If, if we can make a recommendation, outside might stop at some cutoff, but inside could still continue because it seems like it's a noise issue more than anything with the staff's, staff's issues. And we're here to answer any questions if you have any for us.
Questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, just to let you know, we have the store director here and we have two of the project managers that are doing other facilities. And just as a quick note, I just noticed today in the business report that I read that Taco Bell is now starting to look at applications for beer and wine in their stores also. So it's becoming, and Starbucks is, of course, doing theirs too. So it is kind of a trend that we're trying to capture.
Well, a community just to our south just denied Taco Bell an application on Tuesday night.
They did?
Not for alcohol, for the whole Taco Bell.
For the whole Taco Bell, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, well, I probably shouldn't have said it.
Is there anyone from the public liking to speak on this item? Please come forward. Come on forward. Welcome.
Hello. My, my name is Kate Arietta. I live in Capitola. I haven't had much time to study this, only sitting in the back. But I was looking at what the, the police recommended. Because my, I live on Center Street and my concern is the noise. I like the police recommendations, alcohol, 10 to 8, only alcohol sales from 10 to 8. I have a problem with the television. No one else is thinking about televisions. Ah, good, thank you. I have a problem with the television. Big problem. I have a problem with the sound system. I don't want any sound system. I don't want acoustic guitar players bringing their own amps. I have a friend who plays guitar and he has a nice little battery-powered amp, okay? It doesn't have to hook up to anything. If somebody wants to have music there, I would appreciate it not amplified in any way, shape, or form. I don't think they need a stage. You got two people, okay? Sit them in a place where the stage would be and let them play. I was surprised, I like this gentleman's use of the word lively. I don't need to hear lively my entire life when I'm home. The other thing is, they say they're going to have like maybe two performances, four hours each. Does this mean like that would make eight hours' worth of performances? We got this guy coming from, from 10 to 2 and this guy coming from 3 to 8? I mean, that's two performances. Even two performers at each time. So, please, please, and I was looking at this paper and there's different, there's different times. One paper says performances 10 to 9, one paper says performances 10 to 8, one, one paper says performances till 11. I'm very, I'm very confused, but I like this idea, minus this outdoor stage, no amplified music, and if alcohol, 10, 10, I gotta get up early and go have a drink at 10. And I'll be there all day. Thank you. Please listen to the policeman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring that back to the commission.
Who wants to jump in? Come on, TJ, you start now.
Do you want me to jump in? All right. I do, I do share some of the concerns that I was just spoken about. Obviously, I wrote down this sound system and the TV and then I question marked the need for a portable stage. I, I applaud the, the idea of trying to look at how to better market that area. It's always been one of those areas, it's like almost closed down. So I think it's a great opportunity for, for Rayleigh's or Nob Hill to do something and I think it's a great concept. I think, for me, I could live with everything that we've discussed with the Police Department's entertainment permit clause in there of acoustic only, no amplified music. I don't think we need a TV. I mean, I could live with the portable stage if it was necessary, but I don't know why the need. It's a very small area there, so I think they probably could get by with some, just acoustic music without it being amplified, although it is sometimes hard to carry conversation on it, Pete's across the street because of road noise. But I understand the concerns of the community, so I, I think it's a great concept and I could support it the way it was presented by the Police Department.
Well, I agree with TJ. I think that, I like the concept. I don't see a need for a TV. I don't see a need for amplified music and having a sound system out there. And I like the idea of the outdoor consumption of the beer and wine ending at 8 p.m. It's fine for it to go on inside in the store if that's what they want to do. You know, I have the, I live across from Shadowbrook Restaurant and, you know, what, what some people think is, is pleasant music going on, is not so pleasant if you happen to live in the neighborhood with them and you don't get to choose when you can listen to it or not listen to it. So I think we should be very cautious about the music and otherwise, I like it.
Well, first, this is, seems to me it's really consistent with some of the themes in the general plan for this area, which was looked at as one of the gateways to Capitola and to revitalize it and give it some life. And this, this is really, I think, terrific in that regard. It kind of, we'd start to turn this a little bit into more of a community place. I can, I wasn't sure what to make of the Police Department's restrictions here, but I mean, this speaker kind of made it a little clearer. Center Street and some of those do have some concerns, so there's a compromise that has to take place here. As far as the TV, tonight is a good example of why you would want a TV there. Because it doesn't even have to have the sound on, but you've got to have, on a night like tonight, you've got to have the TV there.
Well, they can have a TV inside.
They can have a TV inside. They can have one inside, they just don't need to have the one outside.
Well, but a nice evening with a big sports event on, I mean...
Don't you want to get home? Don't you want to agree with the way the rest of us do?
Well, it could not have the sound on, too.
Yeah, and that's going to happen.
Sure, that happens in a lot of places. I mean, that would be a, a minimum to me, is that the...
Seems to me they, they, they could try their idea with no TV and, you know, they can always come back.
For me, it's also a visual. It's not just the sound. It's that these are, you know, if this is a gateway and people are coming into Capitola, they're going to look over and they're going to see a TV going. I mean, that's just tacky.
That's antiquated, though, because the best restaurants now have the TV in their bar.
But outside on the street? I mean, you know.
Come on, Ed. Let's get this man home. You need to go watch basketball.
All right.
Gail?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm, I'm really adamantly, as, as a business owner on that street, I am adamantly opposed to a TV. I really think they'll do a gangbuster business in a gorgeous location without a TV. And you can have a TV inside, you know? Everybody with their beer later at night can have beer and watch TV and it'll be great. So no speakers, no stage, no TV. Follow the conditions that are lined out in the errata 5C with some omissions, right? We've got the addition of the operation, hours of operation that the police have stated, right? In this errata, these are the...
Yeah, and then omission of the outdoor stage and amplified music proposal.
And so we will also add the no TV, no speakers, and no stage.
So that was a motion, right?
That was my motion.
Okay. I want to make a couple of comments before entertaining the motion and getting a second, and that is something that, that nobody's really... a second, and that is something that, that nobody's really talked about. That corner is a very complicated little corner, and I go in and out of there a lot, and you don't need anything distracting the motorists that are coming in and out of there. We have, on the Pete's side, you know, you're not supposed to pull out of that first lane and go left, but people do it all.
Because you have a small car.
Yeah. The smaller the car...
Down.
I've seen several people who normally would not do such a thing, do such a thing, including myself. And to put a TV out there or even to have a band, you're going to, it's going to cause a distraction. I think that's going to turn into a, a safety issue. I wish that alcohol and beverage didn't require a fence to delineate it because I think it would be an awesome gathering place. But a lot of people gather at Pete's across the street and to have amplified sound is going to disrupt that. I mean, you're going to be sitting over, having a cup of coffee, trying to, and people carry on meetings and have, you know, little conferences out there, and to have a band going on across the way, I think is, it's a conflict in usage.
Not to mention the Sleep Setter.
Yeah, but the Sleep Setter's way back there.
You can't believe how sound travels. I hear Village Twilight Concerts.
Yeah, we hear, I hear Village Twilight Concerts at my house.
And I hear the End of the Wharf at my house a lot. I would, though, like to entertain the comment about having outside and inside, and I haven't had a chance to read the errata carefully enough. Do the conditions outline it so that inside can have service later than the outdoor? Or are they all, does it all stop with?
So, it all, it all stops together. I will say that...
It says operating hours of the outdoor dining area.
When I spoke with Rudy earlier, he was open to the idea of expanding that time limit if it was indoor as long as they served food at the same time.
Right. So, that was another thing I was going to mention. If we, I think that it's clear that people can't buy a six-pack of beer and go sit and drink a six-pack of beer, but somehow, we need to make sure that if they are, you know, that there's some kind of food that they're buying at the same time that they're buying the alcohol, otherwise, they can just keep going up to the, the bar and, you know, continue to drink beer and wine. And we already have in this area issues with that kind of thing. So, I'd like to see some, somehow, if it's possible to write a condition that says, you know, one, one drink per purchase, but food must be purchased at the same time.
That will be the condition on the inside building permit, right? I mean, when they, when they go for alcohol inside.
I think we have to be a little careful because sometimes I do drink two glasses of wine and you could, I mean, you can only buy one glass of wine when you walk up with your sandwich and you're halfway through your sandwich and you want a second glass of wine.
But food has been ordered. You've ordered food. I don't think it means you have to order food every single night.
How do you monitor that? I don't know.
How do you keep them indoors after they, if it's after hours?
Uh, you, Kate, I'm sorry, but we can't. Thank you.
Well, that's a management, that's a management thing. You know, that's, we have to rely on the management to follow our conditions, and if our conditions aren't met, we go see them.
Can we look at it again?
Right. So, what we're saying is that outside, the area's going to close at 8:00. But inside, there will still be wine and beer being served and people can still eat in there.
And it's saying 11:00. This condition is saying 11:00 on the weekends, Friday and Saturday. So, it's 8 to 9 on the weekdays, 8 to 11 on the weekends. Sale of beer and wine for dining, that's, that's dining areas. I'm sorry. It's, it is 10 to 8, seven days a week for, for beer and wine outdoors.
Right.
And it does say it can only occur with food.
Right.
So, we're okay.
So, it is okay.
Yeah.
So, operational hours of the outdoor dining area are limited to 8 to 9 on weekdays, 8 to 11 on weekends. Sale of beer and wine for dining is limited to 10 to 8, seven days a week. So, they can buy food and still sit outside and eat up to 11:00 on weekends, but they can't continue to buy beer and wine after...
8:00.
8:00.
For the use outside.
For the use outside. That seems to me like it's just inviting an enforcement issue.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm confused. So, what we're saying is that, I thought we were saying that the outside area, there wasn't going to be any beer or wine or dining out there after 8:00 p.m. But that inside, there could be beer and wine and dining that would go on during the regular store hours to 11:00 p.m. Did I miss?
I, I think that makes it tough, but, I mean, sometimes we do get nice weather till, you know, later hours in the summer, and 9:00 it's still light out, so I would hate to tie their hand. I, I think the way that it's written that they stopped the sale of alcohol at 8:00 kind of prevents some of those trouble areas, and if you want to sit outside and, and eat until, you know, 11:00 on the eve, on a weekend or 9:00 on a weekday, I think that sounds reasonable. I don't know why that would...
And I'd like to see it say 9:00, seven days a week, instead of 11:00 on weekends just because if you are, you know, a resident and you're, you're out that far, there's...
Some people don't even go out till 9:00 at night to get something. I mean, on a weekend, not me. I mean, I'm always in bed before 9:00.
But it's not like we're looking at a sports bar or a, you know, a main restaurant kind of a place.
Well, they're trying, it sounds like they're making a tap, it sounds like they're trying to...
Yeah, I think we're over-managing this personally.
I feel comfortable, I always feel comfortable with the police department's recommendation. I think they've got the experience with violations. They, they know when, how, what types of establishments have more violations and what don't, and I go with what they do, and I think we stay on it and make sure that they follow these conditions, especially, you know, in the first year.
So, leaving condition nine the way that it's stated in the errata?
I don't think it's going to be a bad problem.
And, and we can, we can add a condition that says if, you know, we receive complaints about the operation, then the use permit can be brought back to the planning commission to review the hours.
We could do the same with the speakers and the television.
We're going to start slow.
Television's a distraction. Now, I wouldn't have any problem if they wanted to have a little stage of stuff indoors. Would anybody agree with me on that or...
You know, we're not looking at that today.
Yeah, we're not talking about the indoors. We're just talking about what's going to happen outdoors.
Outdoors, okay.
So, we, we did have a motion, all right? Do, do we have a motion?
We did, from Gail.
Yeah, we do have a motion.
Will you make it again?
Well, oh, easy for you to say.
I just want to know what we're voting on.
All right. I am, I am making a motion that we approve the conditions that were in the errata with the addition of no TV. We already have, yeah, and no speakers and no stage. And I would make the motion that we, we follow the advice of our chief of police on the hours. And I think we can add a condition about, we have before, I know we have added conditions having to do with, you know, if, if there is a noise problem, it can come back to us.
I'll second that. You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
In case they are going to go forward to the city council, I want to express my no on this because I think their conditions are too restrictive.
And Commissioner, oh, Chairperson Smith?
Um, yes. All right. Then that passes. That was the last item on our public hearings section this evening. Do we have a director's report?
Oh, yeah, Madam Chair, a brief report for you this evening. We do have a few events coming up in June that I'd like to make the public aware of and, and the commission. June 15th, we're going to be holding a community workshop for the non-conforming multifamily uses in single-family residential zones. We've sent out notices to folks within 300 feet of those use types, and hopefully, we'll have good attendance and get some good community feedback on that. That meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. June 15th here in the council chambers and...
So, that's not the special planning commission meeting?
It's not, yeah. You guys are off the hook for that. Planning commission is certainly welcome to attend. I would caution, though, if we have three or more of you, that we should probably, you know, probably want to be an observer rather than an active participant so we don't run and follow the Brown Act.
So, we had a previously scheduled special meeting for June 15th?
Correct, and we're going to use that date instead of the community workshop.
Okay, great, thank you.
Give you a night off.
Thank you.
June 23rd, we have scheduled a community workshop for the Pacific Cove Civic Center redevelopment concept. It's going to be at New Brighton Auditorium. The meeting's going to begin at 6:00 with an open house that'll run for an hour. The formal part of the meeting will begin at 7:00. We'll do a presentation, have some question and answer sessions as well. That one is June 23rd.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you.
That's the one our ad hoc group...
And that meeting will be televised, so if folks can't make it to the meeting, we will record it.
Will that also stream live on the website?
It's my understanding that, that we're going to be streaming it. And then finally, June 30th, we have a public scoping meeting as required by CEQA for the Monterey Park Skate Park proposal. That'll also be held 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers to solicit public input on potential environmental effects of the project. And that's my report this evening.
Thank you. Commission Communications.
I only wanted to let you know I won't be here for our regular meeting in August.
And I have a question about Zelda's or someone's use of the breezeway. It's been in continuous use for spare tables, chairs, garbage, all kinds of things, and I, and I know, I know we've brought it up to them, you know, and I'm not even sure it is Zelda's. It's just that it's between Zelda's and the kebab, the...
I think those are Mr. Kebab's tables.
Whoever they are, I think that breezeway should remain open.
Always has been.
Always, you know, remain open. Nothing, nothing should be stored there, right?
Yeah, my understanding is they don't, they're not supposed to be storing anything there. The timing of your comment is impeccable. We've actually been talking with both Mr. Kebabs and Zelda's about refinishing their trash enclosure in front of the deck, doing a better job of scrubbing the sidewalk to get that in a more sightly appearance. Anecdotally, it turns out that the black marks on the sidewalk were, is largely rubber because the wheels on the dumpster weren't turning, so they just were dragging it across the sidewalk for the past couple of years. So, they've agreed to do some more cleaning and, and some repairs there, so hopefully, that condition fixes up, and we'll reach out and remind them of the, keeping the breezeway clear.
Any other...
Just a reminder, there's a big event, a car show down in Capitola this weekend, so we hope to see you all there.
Okay. Okay, with that, then we will adjourn to the special planning commission meeting on June 22nd at 6:00 p.m., and that will be a special meeting continuing with our zoning code update. Thank you. Great.